Good afternoon, I now call to order the July 22nd, 2025, 2:00 PM. School Board Special Meeting for a presentation of the 2025-26 Tentative Millet Rate. If you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, so we will start off with rule call at the end of the table.
Lauren Ramirez, President.
Janie Ruddy, President.
Derek Morris, President.
Kristi Chong, President.
Wilfrid, President.
LaShaka Moore.
Okay, so that moves us on to public comment. Do we have anybody signed up for public comment today?
No, we do not.
We do not, okay, so we will close public comment, move on with the meeting today. And that brings us to summary of tentative budget presentation. Ms. Warren, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon Chairman, very board members, and Superintendent Moore. On Agenda Item 2.3.01, this is the presentation for the 25-26 fiscal year. We will go through each slide. It has the budget for each fund. And we will obviously spend more time on the general fund, which as you know is our main operating fund. Please feel free to stop me at any time with any questions. As you can see at the top, one of the last lines at the first section, we are expecting to end in June 30th, 2025, with an ending fund balance of $9 million. Based on our reductions in the FFAFP third count and based on the amount of staff that we needed to be hired, mainly on the ESC side for instructional and for parapods, this is right where we pretty much thought we were going to end up. So we are on target for that. And where is that within the board policy? I'm getting... Okay. Got a few points here. Okay. So, that being said, let me just go ahead and address it now. The $9 million, as compared to total revenues, which is our financial condition ratio, is 6.9%. So we are right in between the board policy of 5.8%. Thank you. So, in preparing for the 25-26 fiscal year budget, we knew things are going to be tight based on our FTE forecast that had us projected going down 140 students on top of what we did lose in 24-25. So as a result, in preparing, we have been having routine staff meetings starting in early spring with all schools and all departments. In staffing true to our FTE forecast, that was the only way that we were going to really be able to make the budget. So any overages for staffing at schools have to come through attrition. The schools worked very hard with district staff to make sure that that did happen. So we feel pretty good about those numbers. If the students come in, obviously we'll have to add staff, but it's very key for us to wait until after the first 10 days. Because while we do have registrations for new students, we typically lose a few hundred kids the first 10 days of school for those who do not show up.
Because we assume they're coming unless they, if they were enrolled last year?
Because the parents have not enrolled them yet. I mean, have not unenrolled them yet.
Unenrolled them.
Yeah. They called DNEs that they did not enroll. The other thing that we did, we started to hold vacancies in the 24-25 at the end of the fiscal year. Starting the second half of fiscal year, if there were vacancies that we discussed that we could hold on them, then we did do that to try to help also get ready for next, for 25-26 budget. In addition, in meeting with all departments, we did reduce their budgets by 4%, or up to 4%, tried to get to 4% for most. That is to ensure that the budget impact is felt district-wide, not just, you know, on the backs of the schools. So we were able to get that done. And as you can see, if we can go back to the first page, please. As you can see at the bottom, our ending fund balance for June 30th, 2026, that is projected to be 7.5 million, which is a reduction of 1.4 million. Now, if you remember, and the board agreeing to increase health premiums by 10%, that's still short of what the board agreed to go into fund balance. That was made possible by the cuts that we started to do early on in 24-25 and carried forward to 25-26. All of the school and department budgets, the detailed budget will be online on our transparency page for you and the public to go over. If there are any more detailed questions about this budget, we will be happy to answer them. We do have a tentative trend meeting next Tuesday. So if there's any other questions we can answer, or we can take questions now, is there anything you wanted to add?
Just real quick, going back to the millet, I mean, the fund balance, it was 6.9 is what we think it's going to be. What was it for last year?
I want to say it was close to 8%. It was high sevens.
Okay.
So you're saying that at the end of this last school year, going into this one, we have a fund balance, or, sorry, after this projected budget this year, right? $9 million. What was it previous year? So how did we fare in that?
It was close to 13 million, so it did go down about 4 million, which again is primarily made up of the FFAFP revenue cuts and the additional staff we had to add. Now, I will also state, this is a moving target. This is conservative, it will not be below that. But we're still closing the budget right now. We are still closing the fiscal year. That does not close in full until September. So the fund balance, we feel is conservative.
Okay. With the 4% reductions in the departments, is that 4% reduction in supplies and resources? Or is that also inclusive of personnel utilization?
Both. For, for a lot of departments, especially the bigger ones like plant services and transportation, that 4% was met by holding on vacancies and making adjustments to their staff and their, their staff duties.
And there has been a lot of change regarding the release or the holding of Title I, Title III funds and all of that. If you could just catch me up to date, because it seems like every week it's a different story. If I look at different resources, it's different. What, for example, in this budget, you're, is this accounting for Title I, those Title III funds? Or is there anything out there that we're unsure of outside of our local?
So this budget right here that you're looking at is just the general fund? The federal grants will be on the next slide?
Oh, okay, thank you. Yes, thank you. Sorry about that, for mixing the two.
Any other questions on the general fund?
The general fund, when we have investments, is that illustrated on the general fund? For example, when we invest the impact fees, or when new developments come in, we collect those, those monies? Is, when we hold those in interest-bearing funds or bonds or whatever we do with it, is that illustrated on this piece?
It's not in the general fund because the impact fee is a separate fund under capital. And you'll see that when we get to the capital side.
So the income will be on that? Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. Trying to keep it straight.
No worries. Okay, moving on to page two. This is our special revenue fund. These are our federal grant funds. And the first column is school food service. As you can see, their projected revenues for 25-26 are exactly in line with their projected expenses. They will end with a zero fund balance, which is where they started the year for 25-26. Our federal grants, this is, to your point, Ms. Ruddy, this is where our federal grants are. Over 50% of this $10 million fund balance is Title I and the IDEA grants. The rest are made up of smaller grants throughout the, that we get throughout the year. Most are recurrent grants. As far as where we are with the non-Titel I and IDEA grants, can you talk about? Yep, and we'll ask, if it's okay with the board, we'll ask Ms. York to come up and be a part of this conversation. We did ask some of our members to be online, if they are away or here, if you have additional questions. So Ms. York, if you want to start off with just the current grants that are holding.
Good afternoon, board. I apologize, I'm a little personal. So currently, we are experiencing a withholding period on Title II, Title III, and Title IV. And then there's some other things that Renee may want to share about adult ed.
And she is online. We'll get to her after, yeah.
Right now, our allocation for Title II is $492,000. Title III is $69,000, just under $70,000. And Title IV is $241,000. So what the state has done is they've given us, traditionally, the process would be wherever we end June 30th, with dollars not spent the previous year, they would become roll forward in our new grant application. And so they would be added to our new allocation for the upcoming year. This year, because the new allocation has been withheld, Florida Department of Education has given us a one-year no-cost extension on all of these grants. So anything that was left in roll forward, we have immediate access to. And we have to, I'll be working with finance and Mr. Reeves, to look at breaking those budgets back apart because we'll actually be running dual budgets. We'll be running the no-cost extension for 2025. And when, I'll say when, I'll be positive, when the additional funds are released, we'll run a separate budget for fiscal year 2026. That'll give us immediate access to whatever we're rolling forward. And then give us a planning process for how we had planned on utilizing those funds when and if they are released. So we have currently in roll forward between, and this is an estimate, because there are some funds that haven't been taken out, probably around $250,000 between those three grants that we'll be rolling forward. So we'll be looking at what staffing might be in place that we need to maintain salaries for, or what critical resources to support students in the schools would be purchased out of those grants, and those would be our top priorities. And then looking at shifting our application funds around when those dollars are released so that we can go back and cover maybe things that we spent out of 2025-year funds that were allocated to come out of 2026-year funds. So it's going to be kind of a juggling. We're hopeful, and we're waiting. We saw that they released 21st Century. They completed the program review on Friday, and they released that. So we're hoping that 21st Century is an offshoot of Title IV, so we're hoping that will be a priority because it has a lot of similar uses. Title II is teacher, teacher and principal training. And then Title III works for our English language learners. So we're just waiting for those programmatic reviews to happen to see what funds, if any, are going to be released for 2026.
So this $250,000 balance that you're going to work off of, what kind of runway does that provide? Essentially, how lo, oh, in a normal year, how quickly would those funds run out?
It depends, it depends on what the annual usage is. We have a couple of standing resources like Elevation, that would be the platform that we use for strategies and program compliance for our ESAL program. That's about $30,000, and we would want to pay that upfront. And then we have a couple of salaries. We have an attendance specialist, and we have an ESAL specialist that are both coming out of Title IV. So those would be the direct impact priorities. And then we would be able to go back with our team and look at then prioritizing the remaining costs, looking at what are beginning-of-the-year expenditures? How much was allocated, let's say, for training next summer? Those, those funds would, you know, be a last priority in that we want to make sure we have the school year in resources covered. So it will be a, a process of just going through. And right now, we're just waiting to get a definitive answer on if and when those additional funds will be released. But we certainly will be making salaries and, you know, immediate resources to schools, top priority.
And that's really our top priority for it, is we don't want to negatively impact our staff at this point. If the dollars are not released, and if we are not given a different direction about our ability to cover some of those items in general, then we will have to come before you and, and address what we will do with our staffing, how this impacts our, our staffing. Because right now, the direction, unless something happened differently in the last week, we received direction from the state that it is their understanding that it is supplanting if we were to take and move these items to the general fund in the, in the meantime. The collective group of individuals who work in grants and leadership across the state did provide to the state a letter that was produced, I think it was in 2013, that said the contrary. And so we just need for them to be able to provide us clear direction around what do we do when we get to the end of these roll-forward dollars? What we do know, though, is that the general fund cannot absorb all of what is done in federal dollars. And that's not just a Flagler thing, that is across the state. That we cannot absorb all of those positions into the general fund. And so we will use these dollars, and as we get close to identifying, these dollars have, are going to run out, and we hadn't gotten direction, then we'll come back before you with an additional plan. We do know that there has been a lot of lobbying and advocating at the federal government level from our state to be able to provide the dollars to us. Because we believe that here in the state of Florida, we're using the dollars as they are designed to be used.
Right, because all of these particular programs have very stringent requirements when you spend those funds. So just for the benefit of, you know, our community and the public, Title II, III, and IV, those are kind of abstract terms. What are the top ways that students would be impacted this school year if these funds are not returned?
So a majority, a majority of our Title II funds actually support our teaching learning department, which support principal and teacher professional development. They work with the Office of School Improvement. They do our walkthroughs, looking at fidelity of classroom instruction and all of those supports. So those are critical supports that happen on a regular basis during the school year. Title III, those dollars are set aside to support our English language learners, and they actually provide supplemental curricular pieces. Nothing that is state-mandated, but additional above and beyond. We provide Elevation, which is a strategy platform that supports teachers in being able to implement language-based interventions that support English language learners in attaining grade-level curriculum. Excuse me. And then Title IV, we pay for an attendance specialist. We do some of the big things. We do the Great Minds Summer Camp. We pay for an ELL specialist to do a lot of professional development with the teachers in the schools. We have a lot of things for safe and healthy built into. I know Imagine Schools uses theirs to help support their school psychologist in providing those supports for students and teachers. And, you know, we are fortunate in that we have been very particular about making sure that we are doing a lot of supplemental above and beyond. Where we've seen a lot of our neighboring districts have used these funds to really sustain district-level programs and staff. We, we have not, and really, everything is a supplement above and beyond. So we don't have hundreds and hundreds of positions built into these dollars. So that is a benefit to us. Unfortunately, some of the most innovative things that we do come with the flexibility in using these dollars, like our Great Minds Summer Program. I know we all saw the presentation that Rashonda did for end of the year. And those opportunities for our students are invaluable. The things they get to experience and the opportunities that they have really lend themselves well to really growing academics over the summer and getting kids engaged in, you know, excitement about learning. And so those are the things that we would really be saddened if we couldn't continue to support. So we're always looking at how we can enhance and go above and beyond. And that's, that would be one of the major issues that we would have is a lot of those, you know, really above and beyond and innovative things that we do would be lost with the loss of these dollars.
With that, with that being said, you're absolutely right with the above and beyond portions. I think that's what makes us stand out in a lot of different ways, for sure. So just so I'm clear, i-if we had to stop these dollars from, you know, we couldn't use them? How many total, are we talking about just, I was going to say just, but two positions? Is that what you're saying?
Well, we have, we actually have four in Title II, but those are portions of people's salaries because of the way we flexible.
That was my next question. So good, thank you.
So there are four that are proportionately distributed among teaching and learning. And then we have two that are full-time. One is our attendance specialist in student services, and then an ESAL specialist in my department. And then point four would be the Great Minds instructional staff that run the program between June and July every summer.
So six?
6.4, yes.
Four, yeah, okay.
What was the amount for the Title II you said that we?
$492,000.
And have, have, at the district level, have they asked for any reporting at the district level up for review to releases, or is this all from the state level?
It, it is all from the state level. Now, there are other districts. We are not one of the districts that are under review. We have a list of 10 or 12 districts, large and medium districts, Broward, Brevard, Duval, you know, Manatee, some of the bigger districts. They are under review at the federal level right now. I think looking at how those resources are being used in compliance with current administration and the expectations of how those dollars are, are being utilized. We know that, you know, 21st Century is cleared. And I will say, in the state of Florida, our Florida Department of Education runs a very tight ship as far as making sure that we are in compliance with all of the federally mandated pieces well into the application process, down to each individual activity. So I think it will just be anything that might be a change in direction at the federal level and how these dollars might be utilized, could impact. But I think as far as being in compliance with current policy and current expectations, I think the state of Florida does a great job because they, they run us ragged in, in a good way to make sure that we have everything accounted for and that everything is in compliance.
So they're, they want to release these as a whole across, so if they're looking at these larger districts, for example, we're kind of held to limbo until they complete that?
That is my understanding of this. And that is a process that is happening nationally as well as within the state of Florida. So whether they're looking at them state by state, whether they're looking at them, you know, grant by grant, I'm not really sure. There hasn't been a lot of transparency as far as what that review process looks like. But we definitely are getting, you know, weekly communication from partners in DC as well as at the state level, neighboring, you know, districts that everybody is, you know, networking to make sure that whatever information comes out, we're sharing it and trying to stay abreast on anything that might be changing or that might impact the dollars as they're released or not released.
And to the credit of, at the federal level, is the review was ended on Friday. We received notification that the dollars will be released on Monday. And so we're, we're hopeful that that will be the same turnaround for it. But it, it's definitely critical. I think the, the way we have prioritized the dollars puts us in a different position than some of our, our counterparts. But it's still something of great impact to us. And so we do advocate that those dollars are released so that we can continue to provide great services to, to our students.
I think going back to what you were saying, though, just a statement more than just a question, is that it's above and beyond things. And of course, that's what we want to do to be great, as I mentioned a while ago. But it's not kind of what you mentioned earlier, that we're not supporting day-to-day, I'll say day-to-day, you know, general fund-type work.
And in the contract of the individuals that are a part of this, I mean, it does state that while grant dollars are available, I don't remember a time that, you know, we were, we did have to release individuals based on... You do, I mean, yeah. I'm sure you do.
We went through this when we had the ARA dollars that came out under President Obama when we were dealing with that. And that was the last time we dealt with sequestration and the memo for Title I about supplanting. So, you know, it is cyclical. And I'm hopeful. But it, it, the hardest part, I believe, for all of us was the timing. It wasn't necessarily that we were surprised that it happened, we were surprised when it happened. I think we were looking at the possibility of significant changes happening with the next federal fiscal budget, which starts October 1st. But because it was announced the day before they were to release our new fiscal year budget, it kind of left districts across the nation hanging that we had done all this planning. We hadn't had any forewarning of any concerns. So we, we waited until the last possible minute to move forward, and then we got the surprise at the 11th hour, whatever that statement is. So, you know, we're just trying not to be, you know, the sky is falling, taking it in stride, looking at what resources we have, you know, and, and planning. I know Jeff and I talk daily, and Patty and I pretty much talk daily about, you know, where we're moving forward, what do we have, you know, how far will these dollars sustain us, and, and what we need to prioritize. So I think we have a plan. It's just how long, we don't have an idea of how long we might need to sustain this. So it kind of, again, leaves us in limbo, limbo because you can only plan as far as you know you need to plan. So we're trying to be as frugal as we can and make sure all the necessities are hit.
Hopefully, I mean, and I know 6.4 positions, even one position, right? So no matter what all these roles, and I think what people may or may not realize, obviously you do, but these positions impact all of our students. So even if it was one, or two, or 20, but 6.4, so hopefully, like you said, be hopeful because in the end, it's going to affect, you know, some type of resources for the students, and then also those 6.4 positions. But I have seen all the work that you guys have been doing and, you know, from the past. But hopefully, things work out. So thanks for...
So we're just trying to, to hold firm and, you know, have a plan, A, B, C, D. And hopefully, the time will be short and not long that we have to do this. But if not...
I think that's, I think that's what I mean to cut you off, I'm sorry. I think that's one of the things is what, what is, what is A plan? What is B plan? What is C when we get to here? So we really need to be thinking about that. So if you are doing that, you're well ahead of the game of what we're going to do. But I mean, $250,000 is better than no dollars. But, you know, basically, it covers at least one of those titles, Title IV, if you did it that way. But so it's not the worst-case scenario that I was hoping of. But I think having different plans of saying we need to shift gears is something that we need to be thinking about. And I don't know what that necessarily looks like, but...
And right now, that staff, so for our PL, we're cutting back on PL right now. We, of course, there are some critical pieces that we had to do as we bring on new teachers to the organization, but we're holding back on, on our professional learning. We are, and we're focused on keeping our staff employed that are there. That is plan, Plan A, and really Plan B at, at the moment, is to keep staff employed.
I was just saying, that, that's the, that's the risk that we all take when we take grand dollars. We know that when we get them.
Yes.
So they're great, but, you know, they can change, and your whole, your whole budgetary process can be, you know, thrown upside down with it. So I think that's the understanding of the communication piece, that I know that we have to communicate with staff, and I know that you'll be doing that. But that's the, that's the risk that we take of taking any kind of grants at all.
I, I think the difference here is that these are longstanding supplemental grants. It's, the, the term grant is almost a misnomer of it, right?
The really entitlements that, for the most part, you, like social security, you assume it will be there annually. The, the dollar amount may change, but the funding stream has been steady for, in the 40 years.
Right. And the impact that I see immediately, like, we had some tremendous wins this year with our assessments scores. And a lot of that was due to some strong professional development. In the face of people coming into the education craft not having taken one single class. So we rely very heavily on ensuring that your children are taught well with great science-backed strategies, and also can manage students. And without that professional development, it's like just giving somebody the keys to a classroom off the street, right? And so I think that's a direct impact. Just a personal statement, when I was in the classroom, I had, we have a heavily Russian population, Ukrainian population. I had a young lady who was 14, did not speak one word of English, and was in my basically eighth-grade physics classroom. And I didn't know what to do. I had to leverage on the resources of the talented folks in the ESAL department. So when we talk about ELL, English Language Learners, those are the real stories that are... So when we talk about E L L, English Language Learners, those are the real stories that are happening. And it would be a disgrace to, let's say, just have that child sit in the corner saying, well, good luck, I guess, what are we going to do here? And so those are the real stories, the real impact, which I think I'm nervous of having a negative influence on the progress we've made here. At least we have the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But that if if the worst case scenario was that these monies didn't come in, next year, we're not going to have that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We won't. And we will definitely lose all of those roles and all of the services of which I spoke, which is just a skim off the surface of what these Title Two, Three, and Four.
I think so many of these positions operate behind the scenes and they're not in the spotlight. So the level of support they provide for teachers in schools is immeasurable because they're out in the schools all the time.
Right.
They're working with students. They're working with teachers. They're helping support teachers and strategies for specific students. So there's a lot that goes on, especially with our teaching and learning team behind the scenes with the ESOL department, what goes on behind the scenes. And so even though you don't necessarily see it, there is a huge impact that happens. And so we have to, you know, we just have to get creative and, you know, we'll wait and see how we.
Being creative with the plan. So I think, I mean, hopefully, we have what we need, but we definitely need like Plan A, Plan B. Like, how can we utilize our outside resources? Because just all like the literacy nights, like stuff like that, that nothing's free. It works and we can't stop doing that because it's going to hurt our students and our scores. But the students, they need to know. So I think being creative and I I know you guys and everyone can work together for that. Gary.
Do you have any questions around the impact to Flagler Technical College?
Yes.
So would you like for Renee to just give a brief overview? Renee, if you could do that, please.
Hi. Good afternoon, Board Chair, Board, Lieutenant Moore. We can't see your faces, but I know your voice is well enough to know who's talking, so that's a good thing. Just an update, we're awarded a no cost extension for our previous year Adult General Education and I E L C E grants, which serves our ESOL population. We did a good job of expending those funds last year, but that only carried us a week into this fiscal year of July. And so recently, this past week, we were able to receive some roll forward dollars, which is in the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars. And so we are, we will turn that straight into salaries. Which, how it impacts us is we have six, six point two five percent of a marketing and recruitment specialist and one point two five percent of a testing specialist. One full-time teacher, I apologize.
She's at a conference with many of our staff members.
I apologize. I'm at a conference and I found a high space and such and just let. So that that was one point two five percent of a testing specialist. We do have one full-time teacher that teaches Adult General Education for us, GED classes. It's six part-time adult general educators and three part-time ESOL teachers that are all on those grants that, you know, we are making plans for moving forward if the funds don't get released. What we were allocated, if it does get released and when it gets released, is a hundred and twenty-three thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars in the Adult General Education portion and twenty-nine thousand fifty-four dollars in our I E L C E portion, which is our ESOL. Do you have any questions or anything that you couldn't hear due to background noise that I need to repeat?
Thank you, Ms. Karen Glenn, for that. The, we were talking about having Plan A, Plan B, Plan C, right? With these particular roles and utilization of these funds, do you have any alternatives to be able to provide those services or complete that work i- if we're faced with non-fun, not not receiving these funds?
So my adult education supervisor is here at the conference with me, and it's been a big topic here. So we've been talking through some of those things, including the issue of whether or not it would be supplanting to move some of those those positions to the general fund and then move them back. So we did receive that memo, but we're working through whether or not that would be a reality. In case that does become a reality, we do have some additional grants that we can use for a very short time for our for our teachers. So we have some funds that come in from the jail. And we also have Health Literacy Grant and also Grant from Dollar General that we can look at, talking to them about moving more of those funds into positions and dealing with some of the curriculum resources and things that we already have. That's, we want to keep positions where we can do that.
You're also applying for some additional grants as well. I just want to kind of have have you touch on that just a little bit also, that just for, it may not be immediate, but they are some things that you're working on. Am I correct in that?
We we are applying for additional grants in our Career and Technical Education Departments. And unfortunately, those wouldn't affect our Adult General Education programs for GED and for ESOL is completely separate.
How about, is there any kind of potential with relationships with the Chamber of Commerce or the group between Brevard and.
Career Source.
Right, Career Source, Brevard, Volusia, and Flagler Counties. How, are they providing any messaging or plans to help support these initiatives? As, you know, obviously, our county isn't the only one affected there. Any support or coming from those collaborations?
We provide a communication to them. And we have, they are open to helping our students pay for GED tests and subtests themselves. We need to have continued conversations about whether or not they would be willing to support teachers. They are dealing with the same pot of funds through LEOA as we are when you're talking about supporting these programs. And so it's also the same pot of money that was paying for Road to Success when they chose to use the dollars that way in Flagler. And so they have reallocated those dollars to a different program. So they are looking, they are willing to help where they can. And they are looking to see where they may be able to have some unrestricted funds to help Flagler County and the other counties and their GED, specifically GED programs they're interested in. ESOL is a different story.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We would be looking to some of our migrant associations and things like that to see if we can get some assistance in our ESOL programs, which has happened in the past.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next slide, this is our debt service funds. We have three separate funds here. The first one is our Revenue Bond Fund. This is for our nineteen ninety-eight capital improvement bonds. We have approximately six hundred and seventy thousand left to pay on this, and that does mature in twenty-eight, twenty-nine. The second column is our COPS. We have two COP series in here. The first one is our two thousand and fourteen, and that last payment is being made in twenty-five, twenty-six. And if you recall, we did refund the remainder years of that two thousand and fourteen in twenty-twenty-four to get a cost savings of seven hundred thousand dollars going forward. And the remaining amount on the COPS twenty-twenty-four is eighteen million, and that's due to mature in thirty, thirty-one. The last column is our bus lease purchase that we did in twenty-twenty-three. This was a five-year lease, and there is one point eight million remaining, and that will mature in twenty-eight, twenty-nine. Any questions on these debt service funds? Moving on to the Capital Projects Fund.
I'm sorry, can we go back to the debt service? Can you explain to me a little bit more around the COPS that that that's the, why is that considered a debt service for us?
Because we had to take out COPS back in two thousand and five to build Remfire emitances as well as when the G S B building was being constructed. Those are the three main things that the original two thousand and five COPS had paid for. That got refunded in two thousand and fourteen to recognize the cost savings and then refunded again in two thousand and twenty-four.
Okay, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
And what'd you say, what was the the final payment of those?
For for the COPS? The twenty, the two thousand and fourteen COPS, the final payment is this year, twenty-five, twenty-six. And the final payment for the twenty-twenty-four is in twenty-thirty, thirty-one. Moving on to the Capital Projects Fund, the first column is the PICO Fund. As you are aware, we do not get PICO funds as a district. These are passed through entirely to the charter school. The second column is our C O and D S. Every year, we get a pot of money. It increases a little bit each year by about twenty thousand dollars from the state. And these funds are allowed to be used for renovation projects at our schools and buildings. The third column is our one point five mil, which is, which is funded by our property taxes. As you can see, our total revenue is twenty-nine point six million. That does include about one million dollars of interest that is earned. Back to your question, Mrs. Ruddy, all of our investments are kept in what's called a pooled cash account. So every month when we get the bank statement, we do a calculation that separates out the interest earnings by each fund. So every fund, based on their balance, their outstanding balance, gets their own portion. And the projects that are funded out of here are primarily on the five-year capital plan. They include the major projects that Mr. Bush has presented or will present in the next meeting. And it includes the purchase of our school buses, our vehicles, F F and E throughout the school district. And it also pays for some of the debt payments out of the debt service fund. The last column is other capital projects. This includes two funds, the half penny sales tax fund and the impact fees. For the revenue, it's pretty much split down the middle. I think eleven million is sales tax and the remainder is impact fees. For the cost going out in the bottom section, the first line, fifteen point seven million, the vast majority of that, actually, all of that is the sales tax fund. The impact fees, now that the the high school expansion is done, the only payments coming out of there is for the debt service that we can use from the Remfire emitances buildings that went up in two thousand and five.
The eleven point four million that's being transferred out.
It's all for debt service.
Just all for debt service?
Well, sorry, it's all for debt service. And then there is a portion, six point seven five million in the one point five mil that goes to general fund for allowable items by statute, which includes the maintenance costs, portables and insurance and salaries and benefits of bus drivers.
Has that been consistent?
It has been very consistent. The only thing that changed is about two years ago, the state added that we can use those funds for bus drivers. Everything else has been consistent for years. The next fund on the next page is a self-insurance fund. As you know, this is the fund that governs our health insurance. So the local sources is all premiums based on board and employee premiums. The estimate there is fifteen million dollars. Our expenses include claims, our consultant with Brown and Brown, various fees for all the different insurances that we pay. We are looking to end the year at five point three million. And as you know, this could increase even more depending on the opening of our clinic as that is being utilized by staff. The claims, which is our largest cost, should go down.
Wellness Center.
Wellness Center.
Thank you.
Not kidding. Quick question on that, and you may not have context on this yet, right? Some of the adjustments to the benefits were to encourage more of the family participation, which would hopefully drive down our overall claim ratio. I was just curious to see if we had, if that actually played out in the enrollments thus far this year.
Yeah, that would have to come from Human Resources.
Yeah, we we have that on the calendar for August to bring you an update on the Wellness Center and our insurance spread.
Okay, super.
Thank you. And I know that Mr. Ule and Mr. Walker have, they have that information prepared. We'll have them send it to you, but that is on our August informational, to give you that information.
Great. We won't spoil the release then at this point.
Our final fund is what's referred to as a permanent fund. It is a scholarship fund that has, that was derived from an endowment that was contributed to the school district years and years ago. The only cost that comes out of this is one scholarship for five hundred dollars to a student each year, which is in line with what the endowment states that it can be spent on. Any questions on any of those funds before we move on to the next agenda item?
I just wanted to question, so the, from our E S R funds, I know that it was, it was about seven hundred and six or something thousand dollars that we were supposed to have go to the Wellness Center. But now, I just want to make sure because I heard it came from capital funds because it was stopped. So I just, because when I was made aware of that, I I wasn't sure. So I just want to. Because that is a big chunk, but I wasn't sure. So, because I don't remember hearing about it.
So what we did when.
Seven hundred, so just so everyone knows that.
Absolutely.
It actually is coming from capital now instead of.
It is, and it keeps coming up over and over again.
It's a lot of money.
So at the end of the E S R dollars, we had an opportunity to write an amendment to cover the cost of the Wellness Center. We wrote it and we received, we wrote the P O, and then federal just pulled everything back. So we left the P O open and we were in that negotiating period of, are you going to get a no cost extension, whatever? We actually just received final approval on the no cost extension, I believe it was last week. And so when I meet with Patty this week, that's one of the things we're going to go over. So maintenance has been making payments on that P O. Now we just need to go into flags, provide the supporting documentation and be able to pull that down to the district. So that will actually be funded out of E S R.
Okay, so that was temporary.
Yeah, so we. We purposefully did not close the purchase order because we knew, had we done that, we could not reopen it and keep it valid. So we just left it open.
But for clarification, the purchase order funding is the grant.
E S R, yes.
It's not, it's not capital funds.
It is not capital.
So we had it, they pulled the dollars back, we had to shift. And then we still pursued, this is what we've identified these dollars for, and then we just got approval. So now it's back to E S R.
We'll be getting that reimbursement. We'll be able to pull those funds down. So that's six hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars that will actually be E S R funded for the Wellness Center. Yeah, it made me feel better too, because we went through a lot of, you know, back and forth. And then all of a sudden, it went away and I was like, no. And Dr. O'Brien helped. We wrote rebuttal after rebuttal. And finally, U S Department of Ed was like, yeah. I think all, again, all of the states, we had gone through the process of getting the no cost extension, and then it was just cut. And they said, no, we're not going to honor this anymore. So again, it left a lot of districts holding the bag for a lot of expenditures that weren't budgeted through their funds. And yet expenditures had been made. So I think in in good faith, U S Department of Ed went back and looked at it and said, we had already honored this. You know, we really legally need to do this because it's going to be very detrimental to kids if we don't. So they went back. And so we finally have the no cost extension in our hands. So we're ready to pull those funds down and get all of that closed down.
Thank you for clarifying. I know it was back.
And I want to clarify my statement. The Wellness Center update is actually on for today, your three o'clock. So you'll get that information today.
Great. And we're just, we have ten minutes till our next meeting. And we're just, we have 10 minutes till our next meeting, so we need to move forward. And so if we move on to 4.01, permission to advertise?
Thank you, Mr. Perry. 4.01 is our TRIM advertisements that will be advertised in the News Journal on Saturday. That is a requirement of the TRIM process, as well as this budget meeting that we're currently having. The first ad is our budget summary, which is the summary of everything we just went over for our school budget funds. At the top, you can see the only addition to this is the millage. The millage in the second calc comes out every year, July 19th, and that is when we know what our millage is, and that is when we can start working, you know, on getting these ads together and figuring out what our capital revenue is based on that millage. So at the very top left, the millage for '25, '26 is 3.101. It is a decrease from last year's millage of 3.117 of 1600ths. We will discuss the millage in more depth at the tentative public hearing on Tuesday, next Tuesday, at 5:15. The second ad is our Notice of Tax for School Capital At-Lay. This is a mirror of what TRIM requires school districts to advertise for. So if we spend funds on something that's not on this advertisement, the auditors will make us reclass it, and then the only place to come out of that is general fund. So we do ensure that the ad is very in line with what comes from the Department of Revenue. If you could scroll back to the top, please. Thank you. At the very top, you can see that it notes that our millage that we levy for the capital at-lay is 1.5 mil, the remaining, which is our discretionary, is 3.849. And when you take the total property value from the property tax appraiser, divided by the 1.5 mils, and then we multiply by 96%, because typically, that is all you collect in taxes, is 96%, that equals the 28.8 million. So that is our capital revenue that gets reported in our 1.5 mil fund, and to the state in our budget as well. Going on to page four. The, one more page, please. Thank you. This is our Notice of Opposed Tax Increase. These amounts come right off of what is our, called our DR 420S, which comes from the property tax appraiser. They put all of our values on there. The only thing we add is the millage, and then it gets certified to, to, to the property tax and into the state. This is just a standard ad that has to be accompanied with our other two ads. And like I said, these advertisements will go in the News Journal on Saturday. It is very time-specific per the TRIM calendar, and just to note again for the public, our tentative public hearing on budget and millage will be next Tuesday, the 29th of July, at 5:15, time certain.
Thank you very much. All right, so we will move on from here to public comment. Do we have anybody for public comment?
No, we do not.
Okay, so we'll move past that. Board member comments. Does anybody have any closing comments?
No.
Okay, Detective Moore? Okay, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.